And right now, there is not a plan to build, you know, a massive tower block. And you can have your influence, and I think that's really important. And there will be every opportunity to get engaged with these plans. And I'm certainly looking forward to seeing a lot of resident involvement. Remembering that this isn't just about the RPLC site, but also the police station and potentially remodelling the rest of the campus that already exists as well. So I think it is a massive opportunity for Winchester, but it's also a massive opportunity for local people to get involved in that co-design, where you know where you want to get to. But you have the opportunity to influence what the building is, how the buildings work, how people travel through the buildings and between the buildings early in the process.
The only comment I wanted to make, councillor Cross, but what you said is that you've always been able to engage with the planning process on any planning application. So I'm not sure why this planning application feels different, but I take points that did give it does. Councillor Power.
Chair, thank you. I seek clarification process. And I'm looking at page 55 of the paper before us, and I'm not finding that clarification. What I would expect to happen is that the planning application would be submitted. And if approved, we would then move on to appropriation. That would allow the consultation on appropriation to take place in full and certain knowledge of what is proposed on that site, how it is proposed, that people will move through that site, and be assured that they can provide constructive criticism on a planning application that has been proved. That sequence of events is not made out before me on page 55. I would like confirmation that that is how it will work.
Right, thank you. You are right, and if that's feedback from the committee this evening, that we can improve on the report for next week, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Minister again. I believe that it's in part set out at paragraph 15.2, councillor Power.
I'll let you look at that for a moment, councillor Power, and we'll come back. You can do it. Councillor Hall. Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify, this is a Winchester City Council, the whole district asset. It is a land transaction. There's a lot of talk about certain residents very locally to that place, but actually what potentially is on offer is a benefit to the whole district, which is why that request for consultation and that broader discussion, I think, is still a valid request without being a legal requirement. And I just wanted to make sure that we're all taking this decision in the light that, you know, we do have residents in Demmead or Wickham or wherever, whose money this is, and that we should therefore be cognizant of that. So that's not to decry the influence of those who are very local to it, but this is a land transaction for the whole council, not just for Winchester citizens.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Chair. I've actually just lost my point because I moved where Taya sent me. I think the point I was looking at, it said, if planning commission is granted, the council may decide to appropriate or may consider appropriation. And we talked through a process, so the planning commission may be, if the theory given, and then the council appropriate. So where it says we could consider, I just wondered on what criteria we would be considering.
So the answer is summarised at paragraph 4.28 of the report.
Chair, I have honestly read this report so many times, it's still not totally clear to me.
So the statutory wording is that the land is no longer required for the purpose for which it is held. But in the case law, it is explained as a comparative test. And the council has to consider whether there's a greater public need for the proposed new use as compared with the current use. Exactly.
Councillor Ferguson. That helps, thank you. So just going back to the point you made earlier, where you said during the appropriation when opinions, I think, as you said, are being sought and people can lodge objections. You said within an objection, somebody could bring forward a detailed alternative for that site. Fully costed and soon, an alternative plan. And you said the council would have to consider that objection. In terms of what this says and what the law says, what do they have to also consider against what is currently useful, what the alternative use should be? Thank you.
In theory. In theory, that's an interesting question. But all the objections, or the main thrust of the objections, is, as I've read them, is that the land should continue to be used for its current use, i.e. for public recreation. So that falls directly into the framework of the decision that the council would have to make. To take an example, which is well known, if a group came forward with a properly costed scheme for a public Lido and demonstrated that that's feasible, then the council would have to take that into account to deciding whether to change the use from its current use, which is regarded as public recreation, into which a Lido would fall, or to move to the new proposed use, tertiary education, let's say.
Thank you, that's really clear. I'm just curious as to whether that means that who decides? Presumably Cabinet rather than full council decides the public need without consulting the public? Is that right?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I can take this one. In terms of the decision to appropriate, that would be an executive decision made by Cabinet. That isn't a function in our constitution or full council.
Thank you, Scam. Just before we move on to the next question, I just wanted to come back to you, councillor Power. Do you, paragraph 15. whatever, two? Answer your question.
Chair, thank you, I'm going to go over again. It refers to the milestone stages, and there's an implication that one milestone is dependent upon the previous milestone. You can have multiple threads in a project plan, and so it does not make it clear, in my view, that it is a required sequence of events.
I think we're very happy to take that away and have a look at that before Cabinet.
Thank you. Councillor Goodfrey. Sorry. Chair, could I ask, have we moved to questions on the report itself? Or are we still debating the public? At the moment, we're certainly going through the report and the public piece, but as I said earlier, there's some crossover. So I suggest we move to a point where we're asking questions on the report, if we specifically have them, but also, yeah, they're sort of intertwined. Thank you.
If I move, maybe move on to a different area and topic. Calculation of value. The report in section 3.1 talks about best consideration reasonably obtainable, which although housing in the first say might be difficult in the flood conditions, student housing might have been considered and has been explicitly excluded. Knowing that the centre of Winchester, and although it's a lot of periphery, the centre of Winchester attracts a land value of about 6 million plus per acre. We're talking about significant amount of money for any land in Winchester. So if we put any, we're trying to obtain the best consideration, and then we put constraints on that value. How do we know the value of those constraints? So we've got a piece of land, which is what, about four acres? And we're going to say, we're going to lease back the one acre of that, which is the skate park. What proportion of the best consideration is that constraint going to put on the value that we can achieve? We've then got other considerations that we want to apply that will further reduce the value of the land, not allowing student housing, for instance. What value can we put on that? Oh, sorry, what effect will that have on best consideration of this proposal?
Councillor Lanning. Thank you, this is clearly subject to valuation advice, and I'll pass over to Mrs. Ady to deal with that.
Thank you. I was just going to say the same thing. The independent valuation report will take all of the constraints into consideration. It will value the land without constraints and then apply the levels as it goes through. That's a standard report.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I have been misconstrued.
I understand, councillor.
You may misunderstand me, but I was trying to establish on what a basis of a decision that Cabinet's been asked to make next week, not further down the line at the end of negotiations. If this deal had to go forward and we enter into a pre-lease period, we are committed to a lot of expenditure, a lot of time in both parties. And we are already loading up the value of the land with constraints, which do not appear in the report as having any value. So we're giving away a multi-million pound piece of land for which we're going to say, but you can't do this, and you can't do that, and, oh yeah, well, you certainly can't do that, which will reduce the value which will be calculated by the independent valuers. But we aren't going to worry about that for now, because it's all too difficult for us. We do need to understand that if the best value could be achieved on the open market was £100 million for our piece of land, and keeping the skate park would reduce that by 25 million, then we need to know that now, when we make a decision to enter into a lease which includes retaining the skate park. It's not just the £15,000 a year we're going to burn ourselves with for maintaining the skate park. It's the value of the land that the valuation will be reduced by. So the constraints we're going to put on this piece of land, which are mentioned and referred to in the paper, have an impact on the value. And no mention is made of that impact, and they must be, before we can enter into a pre-lease agreement. How is that going to be done?
Do we have a response?
Well, the skate park was already a constraint, as was the Bowls Club, because there was always the expectation that those uses would continue on site. But I'll pass over to Mrs. Ady for a bit more detail on that.
Would we like to bring Mr. Coe at this point online?
Yes, thanks, that would be excellent, thank you.
Good evening, councillors. I think the short answer to that, councillor, is that the price for the land will be agreed and validated under section 123 best value before the agreement for lease is signed. So there's no way we would enter into an agreement for lease without that certainty. And the valuation, negotiation, and the independent section 123 valuation will independently validate the negotiated price.
Sorry, that's not what the report says. And even if we're going to, because the report is that the Cabinet will enter into a agreement to lease, not, that being will do it after the value has been set. Yeah, unless, unless the reports change.
Sorry, go ahead, Chair.
Well, the mechanics are that the price gets agreed, and then that gets incorporated prior to the agreement for lease. So there's, I think, for both parties, we need certainty, and we do not want to leave this till it's too late. So those are the mechanics, and the agreement will not be signed unless a price is agreed.
Mrs. Ady. Thank you. Apologies for stumbling, because it is, it's there, and I'm just trying to understand why it's not seen. Recommendation three, delegate the authority to the corporate head of asset management to enter into the agreement for lease, and then the final part of that sentence that satisfying the terms of section 123, which is the best consideration.
So if I can try to express my question again. What is the impact of the various constraints that we are imposing on previous paper, on the value of the land that can be negotiated into a price? If we're going to retain the skate park, if we're going to, as an example, if we're going to retain some of the car parking spaces or the access to the car parking spaces through the land we're leasing out, or preventing the buyer from using the land freely, today's value of that land for best consideration on the open market will be higher than the land we could possibly negotiate. What impact will those constraints have today? Not after negotiation, but today, that we need to be aware of before we enter into those negotiations.
Are you asking, sorry, sorry, Mr. Coe, I'll come back to you in just a second. So are you asking specific numbers, percentages, just approximations?
Proportions, likely range of proportions.
Finger in the air percentage?
Yeah, we know already interest or two and a half million pounds or the clearance of the site and the ongoing business rates and the like. So what else are we in for?
I think the first part of your question, councillor, is that there isn't a magic percentage or discount to be applied. What I can reassure you is that all of those constraints are being factored into negotiations for the value. Those discussions are ongoing, and it gets quite technical at times. But I cannot give you a figure tonight on what those percentages and discount figures are. Your second question just now was, what else are we in for? We know the council will be liable for managing the site for the duration of the agreement for lease. It could be up to five years. So those costs have been quantified, as have the ongoing costs of the skate park.
If I may, I still haven't had the answer. And perhaps Mr. Coe is unaware, but 45 years ago, I did trade as a landlord and property valuer. So I understand the concept of, although it's very, very hazy now. And it isn't easy. But if we wanted to sell that land on the open market, if we were X, if we want to sell it, as is proposed, to the University of Southampton, with the constraints that we want to put on it, it will be X minus a percentage. What is that percentage in general terms?
With respect, I'm not sure this is the forum for technical valuation debate about this. It's a conversation I'm happy to have with the valuers and Cabinet, but at this stage, I'm afraid I just can't, I can't be specific about those questions.
One moment, I'm sorry, I've got several people who want to speak here. Is this worth coming back to in exempt, Mr. Coe? Or do you not have those figures?
I don't have those figures to hand. I'm unhappy to discuss it in exempt, certainly.
Fine. Mrs. Kirkland, who's definitely in the room, did you want to come in?
Yeah, I mean, Chair, I did just have a brief word with the chief executive, because clearly if we start talking about valuation numbers, that was contained in the exempt appendix of the last paper. And if you want to take this conversation any further, I would absolutely recommend that you move into exempt, because that isn't anything that's available in the open session.
Thank you. Come in, Matthew.
There was just one point I wanted to make in response to councillor Goodfrey, that you have to see the issues that you're putting in the context. There's an existing covenant preventing housing on the land. And you'll note that the, broadly speaking, and you'll note that the main proposed restriction on use relates to housing.
Industrial housing.
That's the precise word.
Councillor Cook. Thank you, Chair. I actually, you just mentioned, Matthew, the covenants. And I just really wanted to get some clarity on the covenant that is on that land, because we heard Rose Burns refer to it earlier this evening. So I just wanted to know what power that covenant has over that land. And it, to me, it sounds like it's trying to be overturned. So I want to know what power that has. Thank you.
So there are two different issues here. The land was conveyed by an indenture of 1902. The land was conveyed for the purpose of public recreation. That's not a covenant, that's the purpose. That statutory purpose gives rise to what is generally referred to as a statutory trust, actually under the Public Health Act 1875, but it's virtually identical to the 1906 act, which has been referred to in objections. In relation to the statutory trust, there are specific statutory mechanisms for bringing it to an end. And we referred earlier to appropriation as the means by which it would be proposed to bring that statutory trust to an end, insofar as that was necessary for the development, and insofar the council later took the view that that was the right thing to do. The other point is the actual covenant was imposed under the 1902 conveyance, which prohibits industrial housing in effect. So it's not exactly clear what that means, but broadly, it is a specific covenant given to, which is restrictive covenant in law, which prevents building housing on the site. So those are two different things. And the statutory mechanism is available to free the land from those two different kinds of restrictions are different.
Thank you. Councillor Becker. It came right quicker than I thought. I've got lots of questions on the paper, as you can probably expect, but two main ones. One is quite techie, I'm afraid, and the other is quite general. The techie one is at paragraph 4.5, we refer to case law, Whistville Society and Canterbury City Council, and to the reasons why the leisure centre and the car park don't qualify as open space. And the reason given relates to the car park being free car park. And I just wanted to confirm that nothing turns on the fact that the car park is free, because it's not in fact free. Just wanted to correct that in public, if that is.
Yeah, that is a mistake that we picked up in the paper, and I should actually have corrected that in my introduction. Car park isn't free, it is a paid for car park.
Yes, I know, because I've paid for it. And then the second, more generic question relates to the leaseback agreement and the question that our residents are asking, so I'm asking on their behalf. Why was the skate park not just excluded from the area of the lease? What benefits does the leaseback agreement offer the skate park and offer the status to use it?
Thank you. The skate park is, sorry, I nearly answered not what the question was. It not excluded was the question, but I'm going to answer why it was included, if that's okay with you. The skate park is surrounded on three sites by the site, if it was excluded. So it would be two sites in, sorry. So it would be a difficult site to develop with a hole in the site itself. When the university approached us, they were particularly excited about the flow of the site from the school through the skate park to the Bowls and the uses of that site. That's part of what they're interested in developing with the public. So the skate park remain is actually very important to them, which is why it's an important part of the deal, because that's part of what they see the site developing into. And they were seeking to protect that. Otherwise, they would design around it with it, but it would still be in your hands to then change, move, or do something else with, that would have an impact on their site. And they hugely see it as an attraction for their students. So it's part of what they're aiming to design. So that's why it's initially included. And that's why the leaseback works, because it gives the university the assurance that the skate park will stay, because you've got the lease on it, so you're obliged to do that. Because you've got the lease on it, so you're obliged to do that. And of course, it gives us the assurance that the skate park will stay. So it sort of puts a double hat on that. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
councillor Hall.
Chair, would councillor Lernery consider making a slight amendment to this report? Just give us a clearer financial picture, because dotted in the report are various costs. The £2 million for demolition, the ongoing costs for the skate park, some monies for car parking, it could be five years. When we're decommissioning the building and therefore business rates liability, it would be really helpful if we had a short assessment of the finances that we are committing to just to hold this site for the five years and the fact that, and what we have to commit to in terms of the demolition cost. So it's all clear to us what our investment is. And there'll obviously be additional legal costs because of the appropriation, et cetera. It's not all pulled together as one financial statement here as to the resources that we need to go into invest. And I think that would be helpful for councillors to understand that. I think the figures are hidden generally in the text. It would be good to see that as one piece of evidence, if that's appropriate to the administration. Thank you, Chair.
Oh, we can have a look at doing that. The only thing I would say is that we do have to be clear that a lot of those costs will be incurred anyway, whatever we do with this site. Because we know that, you know, whatever we did with it, there would almost certainly be several years before anything happened. We know that we need to get planning permission for something else on the site before we consider demolition. So we'll have a look at doing that, but we might need to hedge that round with a few points about, you know, a lot of these costs would be incurred in any case. I don't know if Mr Botham wants to comment.
I would maybe say the same comment, councillor Lernery, that those costs are, we know that those costs are liable moving forward for some time. A statement of the cost that are articulated in the report, all together, we can pull that together. How long, the period over which we try to do those costs, obviously, will be subject to how this moves forward. But just clarifying the points in one time would be possible.
Thank you, Chair. And actually, the point is that it does cost us to sit on it anyway. So I'm not, you've given the benefit of doing it anyway, so that we all understand what that is. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the point is it will cost us, you know. And I think one advantage of the university proposal is they are ready to look to engage on that, developing that master plan and starting work on that planning application in a relatively short period of time.
Sorry, Chair, this is a bit of a point here. It is a case that it will cost, it is costing us now. So that's the point.
Thank you. councillor Power. Very briefly, Chair, when we value a site, we don't only look at the commercial value of the site. We also look at the public value of what we do, the social benefit. And of course, that's a value to the community and it is protecting the environment. We are already placing restrictions on the site with the skate park, the parking spaces, permeability and the indoor bowls. But we are protecting it from accommodation and housing. And whatever we do with our land, we have to strike that balance. And this will be no different to any other disposal, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Power. councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to go back to something that was actually said in the public questions. There was a suggestion made only on that the land belongs to the public. And I've seen that in the objections, that when it was sold, it was sold to the Goodburners or the Bar, or whatever they were called. The Alderman, sorry. And I just wondered, I know it is in the report, but I wonder if you could clarify in format for anyone who's listening. Secondly, the other concern that I've had raised with me, and I know again it is dealt with in the report, but it would be valuable to clarify, is that people are concerned that somehow there will be a spread of appropriation outside of this specific area of land. And that somehow, at some point, the parkland either is a risk currently or could also become a risk. So I just feel it would be useful to clarify, if we could, both of those issues, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it's covered in the report. But as you say, the site was sold, using the 1902 language, to the Aldermans of the city. Can't predict without looking through my report. Which in turn, through the years, became the city council, became the previous council and the city council. So the site is held as a city councilal asset, like your assets, with this covenant on it. So it is no different. So it belongs, it's owned by the council. That's the, is that the answer you're looking for?
Yes, yes, I think it's worth clarifying. But like with all our assets, the council's purpose is to do our best for our residents with those assets, which is true.
That's right.
Yeah. And then the second question is just a bit more around when we say the green space, the parkland is protected. Can we say a little bit more about how it is protected and we won't have appropriation crew? Yeah, I think that's, it's covered in recommendation four, which refers to the appropriation of those parts of the site required for the scheme. So anything outside the red line, anything outside the scheme itself will not need appropriating and will not be appropriated. So can I, again, can I just be clear? That means that all of the parkland, the science of the red line, is absolutely essential and will remain as parkland for recreational use.
Absolutely.
councillor Godfrey.
Thank you, Ben, Chair. The way we want to, another point. Covered by section 12.8 in the report, page 66. I think many councillors have been impressed with the proposal coming forward from the university and the excitement of delivering a world-class facility, extending the existing creative hub within Winchester onto a larger site, is something which I really do welcome under the right circumstances. So I wanted to just find out a bit more about the other benefits, which are listed in 12.8. The facilities and opportunities for younger people. I wonder if we knew what those were and how we will be delivered this. They're also not mentioned in the heads of terms. The increase in student population will deliver economic bonuses to the city. So how many students are we expecting to be added to the current student population as a result of this proposal? And what's the income per student that will result? If this is a potential benefit. And the last, the fifth bullet point deals with a cultural resource that we develop, where the development could deliver. How is that going to be delivered? And for three points, what value do you put on the benefits?
Thank you. At this point, those benefits are unquantifiable, partly because we do have that blank sheet of paper for the university to work with local people to develop exactly what goes on the site. Certainly, the intention is to include that public performance space that's included in the heads of terms. So that's baked in. But there are obviously a far wider range of facilities, both cultural and recreational, food and beverage and so on, that might be included in the facility. In terms of students, the number will depend on exactly which faculties are operating on the new site. And it may also depend how much of the area is for students. There may well be incubation space for startups, for example, included. But that's all to be worked through with local people. So as I say, it's not quantifiable right now. But it's about balancing up all the potential benefits. And we're sure that working with local people, the university will be able to do that.
councillor Carr. councillor Carr.
Thank you, Chair. So obviously, as a council, we have a duty to make the most of our assets in very broadest terms with our social benefit, whether it's an economic benefit or whatever. So we have a site which is going to incredibly decay. The longer it's left there, the worse it can be. So this gets me on to the timetabling. So as I understand it, the deal that's being proposed is for a five-year period before, you know, maximum five-year period before plans have come to a certain stage and been approved. And, you know, talking to people who are in the general property kind of development kind of space, their challenge to me goes along the lines of, why do you need so long to get that far? How long, you know, is five years a reasonable amount of time to come up with a master plan and to get that approved? Or should we not be trying to be a little bit faster and just get on with it? And are there incentives in place for the university to act in to just get on with it?
The biggest incentive is that the arrangement isn't extendable. So they do have to stick within that five years. I think it's also safe to say that it will not take five years for us to know if something isn't going to happen. I think we can be fairly confident. When you look at it in comparison with other developments, this is much more of a central Winchester kind of scenario, rather than having a field or some back gardens to work in. It's going to take longer to work through. There is that public engagement process, you know, that we all want to see going forward. So that's why the length of time is what's considered reasonable to give both us and the university an amount of comfort. Obviously, this has all been negotiated as a package. So, you know, there have been some swings and roundabouts within this. But I think we agree that the five years is long enough, but not too long.
So can I just sum that up and sort of say, so part of the reason why it's five years is because we want for there to be some serious public engagement and an opportunity to do things.
Yes, absolutely. We'd be in a very different situation if they already had, you know, plans gone up by architects. But I think we're probably, well, most of us are probably pleased that they haven't at this point.
councillor Crass.
Thank you, Chair. Just staying with the public engagement, we're going back a little bit. Page 53, 4.5 and 4.6. The first of publishing the notices and the error, not publishing the notice. When the notice was published, it just covered, broadly speaking, the bowls club and the skate park. There was a choice made not to publish the notice on the whole site. And if you look at 4.5, that speaks to the leisure centre and the leisure centre car park not qualifying as open space. So it's interesting to me that a choice was made not to publish notice on the whole site. And the fact that there was this definition that it doesn't qualify as open space. So maybe it's a question for Matthew. The officers are satisfied. Are you satisfied? And what does the fact it's not open space mean? Does it mean anything?
It means that the obligation to advertise doesn't apply to it. The relevant definition is set out at 4.3. That's the definition in section 336.1 of the Town and Country Planning Act 1990. The relevant part of it is used for the purposes of public recreation. So one can ask oneself whether the leisure centre that's been closed for a year is used for the purposes of public recreation or it's car park. The report also makes another point at 4.6, which is that because of the way in which the deal has been structured, which is actually in accordance with the objection from the Friends of the River Park, there's going to be, in any event, a further advertisement and opportunity to object. And the proposal is that that will relate to the whole site. Because the proposal is to make, but those parts of the site that are in respect of which the use will be proposed to be changed, because that's the appropriation stage. So that even if there were an error in this notice, there's going to be another opportunity for people to object to the change of the use of the land, which is really what they're talking about.
Absolutely.
So thank you for clarifying. I could argue with you that the leisure centre was used for the purposes of public recreation. It's a question of timeframe, perhaps, in terms of recently it was used or if it has still been used. So I could argue with you on that. I just think it's a shame that the opportunity wasn't taken to give notice on the whole site. As you say, made little difference either way. And it's a shame, because it's built in a level of legality around it, which was unnecessary. And I think it, I think a different approach going forward, which wasn't so legally strict, might be quite interesting, if you saw, in terms of the public consultation going forward. Thank you. I'm not sure there's a question there, Deputy Tim.
Just to clarify, I think I did say earlier that in relation to the advertisement for the change of use, that will be all the site. But not only those parts that are going to be changed in terms of the use, but potentially all of the site.
Are you happy with that, councillor Crass?
I mean, you've just emphasized my point, is that going forward, it's going to be on the whole site. So why not just do it on the whole site and stop?
Yeah, the advert was done under leaked, following legal advice. But clearly, we'll take that point on councillor Crass as we consider moving forward on this.
Then can I add something, if I may? That decision then wasn't made legally by this QC sat in this room. Maybe that was somebody else that made that decision. Is that correct? Not that that's relevant at this point, but I'm just asking the question. Please do, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cook. Yes, I can assist here with members. Obviously, on receipt of the pre-action protocol letter from Friends of the Park, we did take immediate advice from Matt Fochens QC in respect of the steps that we would need to take, the extent of the advert that was needed to be put in the press, when we would put those in the press, for the period and duration that was necessary to comply with the law. So absolutely, top advice was received and was accepted. So absolutely, top advice was received and was accepted.
Thank you. Next speaker, I believe, is councillor Horle.
Thank you for allowing me to ask a question. We're in the middle, obviously, of the local plan process. And a number of the objections speak about the increase in student numbers and where they will live. So there's concern that obviously one of the benefits is that there are more young people. But where will they reside, given this site cannot accommodate them? They have to be elsewhere. Are we able to give any clarity in this report? Or can the university, in terms of what the recommendation will be regarding students and their living accommodation? Thank you.
Thank you. This was a matter we've discussed from the university from the very moment they brought the proposition forwards to us because we knew this would be an area of really big public concern. The university will be looking to provide purpose-built accommodation for all those students who need it. Right now, the number of students, as we referred to earlier, is unclear. There are a number of potential sites for student housing in the town. And ideally, we'll not only deal with any extra students, but also hopefully mop up a few more of the students that are currently occupying our estates.
Where have we been going at this for, just shy of an hour and three quarters? I have two questions left, two on my list. Yep, that's you, Chair. Do we have any other questions? Because then I'd like to take a short comfort break before we move to the appendices. Is that it? We have two on the main body of the report. Okay. Councillor Weir.
Thank you. I hope you consider this is on the main body of the report. We're just kind of looking at some of the questions that are coming up and particularly kind of linking the challenge of public engagement and consultation along with the complexities of this project. I mean, we have multiple different perspectives coming together here, interests and aspirations. And I think it really is challenging in a very different way, perhaps, from the central Winchester. You know, we've got a really strong interest around the environment and the impact that this will have there. The ongoing desire to see it as a recreation focus, a cultural hub, a centre for education and somewhere where our creative sector can get a real boost. So I'm wondering whether we could talk to the University of Southampton about how we will engage, as councillor Horle said, people right across both the city and the district in getting this balance right. And I just wanted to make a suggestion that we might invite them to bring forward the Southern Policy Centre, who've done a lot of work for with us around High Streets, to perhaps look at that and consider some sort of deliberative process that we can balance out those multiple interests, given that there are so many other complexities on the site as well that have got to be brought into the mix. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. We are taking note of that point. Thank you. Brilliant helpful. Councillor Boson.
I just have two very quick questions. One in the risk register on page sixty-two, we do touch on the risk of legal challenge and we talk about the mitigations that are there to try and prevent that. It's really a question of how confident we are that there won't be another legal challenge. Should cabinet go ahead and make this decision? And then my second question is, within the report, I can't find the exact place now, it talks about the university is considering sites alongside other potential sites. So it wants the option to develop this site. And I wondered to what extent, obviously, we're considering today, because this university is definitely going towards to build this site. And I wondered to what extent we can be sure that that is something they really want to do. So I'm pretty sure there's a clarity on legal challenge. That's on page sixty-two in the risk register. And the view of the university is looking, only seeing this as one of another type of site. Thank you. Thank you. Our mitigation, no doubt, and the same page for mitigation against legal challenge has all been followed to the letter. So our confidence is that we have delivered our mitigation as laid out in front of you. So hopefully, we've covered all of the bases and make sure we've got that covered. We've certainly delivered everything that we've said we would deliver in the end. How confident we are with the university, we're working alongside them as they prepare for their decision, which is being made in the next few weeks as well. So we're both aligned with regards to timings, with regards to lining up for the agreement fully should this be agreed by cabinet next week. We do work with them at officer-to-officer level around the progressing site and what other work they're doing around the site. We're aware they've pulled together a project team. We're aware they've pulled together consultants for the engagement. So we do believe they're committed to this site should the decision be made favourably.
Mr Coe.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Boson, I think you've copied on the risk of legal challenge as well. No lawyer should ever tell you that they have one hundred percent. I can assure you there will never be a legal challenge of any decision that the council makes because that's not a guarantee anyone should give you. What I can say is that officers, the officer team, along with Mr Coe and QC, have done everything we can to ensure this decision is as legally sound as we can make it. But we have heard from Friends of the Park, when they have addressed committees, that they believe they have a different legal opinion. And therefore, the possibility of a challenge is clearly there. What I can say is that the advice that we have received and that I have reviewed and am happy with and is represented in the report, is that we've done as best as we can to make sure we're on the right side of the law. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Was that?
Good for you.
Yes, thank you. It's unfortunately a risk that we seem to have to bear in this part.
And this councillor Horle's pence earlier. So councillor Horle, and then we're going for a comfort break of five minutes. Chair, a recommendation of three on page forty-eight says, and this is no comment to the officer, that we delegate the price to the head of asset management. And given the profile of this and the interests it's gaining, is that an appropriate delegation? I appreciate that I have all the technical skills to sort the lease etcetera. But is that something that we want to endorse? That's my question to councillor Weir.
Thank you. Certainly, my opinion is that Mr Coe is the best-placed person within the council to make that decision, given his background and his skills. You know, this is certainly not one of the biggest deals he's ever done. And Mr Boson may want to comment on this, but certainly I'm very comfortable leaving it in Mr Coe's hands.
Chair, I would add that obviously that decision would be with, you know, taking into account the further details that are contained within the existing appendix as well.
Right, so it's twenty-two twelve now. If I can ask for your order to be back in the room at twenty-two twenty. And we'll move on to appendix A. So everybody, appendix C is exempt. Can I ask everybody now if anybody has questions on the exempt appendices so we can allow to move into exempt at the end of this session? Yes? Okay. So after we've gone through appendices, all the rest of the appendices minus C, we shall then move into exempt. Okay. So moving on to appendix A. Does anybody have any questions specifically on appendix A? Does anybody have any questions specifically on appendix A? No?
Sorry, Chair, can I just get to it, please?
Okay. Well, seventy-five, the map. No? Right, seventy-seven, page seventy-seven, appendix B. Councilor Ferguson.
Thank you, Chair. Just going to go over the part. Okay. I think it's under the lease terms. Claritin, there's a phrase that says, basically, for the first thirty-five years, principal uses of or in connection with tertiary education, including university and survey purposes only. And the question I have is why, if the use was changed to that, why would only be for the first thirty-five years, the hundred-and-fifty-year lease? Because people are concerned what would happen after those thirty-five years. Thank you. Chair, I'll ask if Jeff Coe is still online. That question, please, Chair.
The principle of this is driven by the university, that they don't, they can't guarantee that in thirty-five years' time tertiary education will still look the same as it does now. It may take some other shape. And typically, when granting long leases like this with restrictions on its market norm to limit the primary restriction. Now, there will still remain the restrictions on title for no residential, so that's not affected. It just, the thirty-five years applies to the fact that they must use it for a tertiary education facility. After that, that can be opened up, but subject to the other title restrictions.
And this is just a question, maybe something I don't know. But if they were to substantially change the use that we were expecting, would the council have any ability to perhaps restrict what they did outside of those other main covenant restrictions? So for example, if they wanted to build, change it to a testing laboratory, testing unit or something, would the council have any scope to influence what happened after the thirty-five years?
Not under the current heads of terms. They would only, as planning authority, have that degree of control. And I might just, if I may, refer to another transaction that we, as a council, approved relatively recently, which was for the lease, long leasehold sale of Upperbrook Street Car Park, where exactly the same thing happened. So we agreed there that there will be a restriction on the use for the first thirty-five years of the lease to healthcare. And after that, the purchaser wanted the ability to open up in case the market changed. So we agreed it in that situation, and this is no different in principle to what we've agreed there.
And if I can add to that, I remember we did have a visit up to Worthy Down this week, where although the facility has been open for a year, they're already repurposing some of their areas for different things because they've realised that they need to rebalance what they've got to provide the education that they're currently providing.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Do we have any other questions on appendix B? No? Okay, appendix D, pages eighty-five to ninety-eight. Any questions on that appendix? Okay, appendix E, just the map on page ninety-nine again. Oh, apologies, it is the latest. Apologies, I've written it down wrong on my notes. Anything on appendix F, the map? My whole thing just locked me out. Appendix G is page one-hundred-and-three to one-hundred-and-thirty-six, and there's the objections by Friends of River Park. Do we have any questions on that? I think some of that, we've given a really good area this evening. Any further questions on it? No? Okay. Sorry, I got booted out of the water, so apologies, I'm just going on to get there. We're done. And. You have? Okay. Councilor Cook.
Sorry, Chair. Prior to we having our break, I asked a question about the covenant. And I'm still struggling with it, to be fair. So I made some notes and I just. So William Barrow-Simmons, I think, is there hundreds of them or thousands of people that are involved with that? And then we talked about a possibility of a judicial review. But I mean, I'm just concerned, would those people not be adversely affected? And how will the council get, not get round it, that's probably not the right term to use, I'm sorry. But breaking a covenant is, is it not, it just not, doesn't normally happen, does it? So when it comes to a planning application, how would it affect that further down the line? So I've thrown in about three things there, haven't I? I'm just struggling with the, not the disposal of it, the possible disposal, and what the ramifications are. Sorry to harbor on this, but it's important to me.
Can I have another go?
But it's only because we've got a covenant in Twyford on a piece of land. And, you know, it's a beautiful big piece of land. And I'm one of the trustees for it, so I'm just keen to understand probably how it works in legal terms.
So I think we've discussed two different things. One is that the land was conveyed for the purpose of public recreation. And that gave rise to what's generally referred to as a statutory trust. And under the Local Government Act nineteen-seventy-two, there's a specific statutory mechanism for bringing that statutory trust to an end. So that's not a covenant, that's a statutory trust. There is also, under the nineteen-oh-two conventions, a covenant not to use the land for industrial dwell, or not to construct industrial dwellings, which broadly speaking means not to build houses on the land. I know that Councilor Godfrey is looking at me with quizzically because there could be a legal debate about what exactly industrial dwellings are. But if I just explain it broadly, it is a covenant not to build housing on the land. We're not proposing that any housing should be built on this land. Indeed, we're proposing to repeat that covenant, to impose it under the lease. So there's no proposal to breach any covenant here. Does that help?
Thank you. Thank you for explaining that again. And industrial housing.
What do you mean industrial dwellings?
Dwellings, apologies. Right. Is that, okay, Councilor Cook. Okay, so going on to appendix H on page one-three-seven. No, that's not, Councilor. I'm going to sound like an old record, but with over four hundred people and the rather extensive list of comments, so people did take the opportunity when the notice was published to make their points to us. I just ask, implore, Councilor learning and the team again, to know that there is huge public interest in this. And then you took one part of the information on the escape park and obviously have made a particular adjustment to the proposed agreement. But there are so many other elements here that I think we could allay the fears of. And the only way to do that, in my view, is some conversation with the residents. Not only who've written here, but in fact on the border district one that I made earlier. And if I recall, I'm an advocate for what we did on Central Winterstern. We were in Allsford, Bishop's Hall, all those other places, asking what people thought about that development, giving its significance to the city. I just ask you one more time to really consider all of this information you've had and to try and, despite a very eloquent legal case, and thank you for that tonight, to why it's not necessary to take this on board and the extent of the information we have in appendix H. Because at the moment, we're sort of noting it, but not particularly actioning any of it. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah. Since we're still in questions, I will respond to that. Clearly, we did, all the objections were read and carefully considered. Some of the things that weren't here were some of the emails that the leader and I received, actually in support of the development, because they weren't objection, they weren't responding to the notice. They were people saying to us, actually, we think this is a really good idea. But I would like to reassure you that we have read all of these and we have taken them under consideration. As I say, you're talking about a conversation, but I'm still not sure about what the function of that conversation would be, what the question would be that we would be asking, and what we were trying to get out of that.
Does anybody else have any questions on this section? Okay, then. Would anybody like to move us into exempt?
I think you'd like it.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Then do we have any members of the public in the room that need to leave? No.
Chair, could you just give me thirty seconds to stop the recording and?
Yes. Thirty seconds.